The invocation to those who wish, please, and participate, please stand and participate. invocation. Heavenly Father, you are always with us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And if we may now say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, great. Now I ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session. Okay.
The vote is open.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? You'd like to get, thank you, by a vote of ten to zero, with Councilmember Wooton abstaining, you've proved the certi-, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal session of September seventeen, twenty twenty-four, and the formal session of September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of eleven to zero, approve the minutes as submitted.
Oh, thank you. And now it's a time that our council enjoys, where we get to honor those who deserve such honors. And my first one, I'm going to ask the following folks to come up. And that would be Patricia Bracknell, Monica Nieves, Osala Dilana, Carmen Semeney, and Anna Williams. If you're present, please come forward. Welcome. Okay. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, honoring the rich cultures, vibrant histories, and the remarkable contributions of Hispanics and Latinos in the United States, the Chamber for Hispanic Progress recognizes the indelible impact of a community whose roots span across Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and whose influence is deeply woven, woven into the fabric of our great nation. Whereas the theme for Hispanic Heritage Month twenty twenty-four, "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Shaping the Future Together," reflects the resilience, unity, strength that Hispanic and Latino communities bring to the United States, from the arts and the sciences to business, education, and public service. Hispanic Americans have consistently enriched our country with their diverse talents, innovative ideas, and unwavering commitment to building a more just and inclusive society. And whereas we celebrate the sixty-three-plus-million Latinos and Hispanics who call the United States home, their contributions have shaped our nation's culture, economy, and identity. From trailblazing leaders in government to groundbreaking entrepreneurs, educators, healthcare workers, and essential workers, the Hispanic community continues to make indispensable contributions to every sector of American life. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino community faces ongoing challenges, including discrimination, disparities in education, healthcare, economic opportunity, and immigration reform, this month is not only a celebration of achievements, but also a call to action to work towards equality, opportunity, and justice for all. We can recognize the need to address these systemic barriers so that future generations can thrive. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino community holds a deep respect for family, faith, and tradition values that strengthen the social fabric of the United States, their entrepreneurial spirit and hard work have driven economic growth and innovation, from small businesses and local restaurants to large enterprises that contribute to our nation's prosperity. This is particularly reflected in the growth of Hispanic-owned businesses, which continue to be among the fastest-growing segments in the U.S. economy. And whereas during the month, we take pride in the cultural contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, from music, dance, and literature, to food, fashion, and film, these artistic expressions have enriched the global cultural landscape and have become an integral part of our shared American story. We celebrate the writers, performers, artists, and cultural icons who have shared their gifts with the world, inspire countless others to follow in their footsteps. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And in Virginia Beach, I encourage all Americans to join me in recognizing and celebrating the immeasurable contributions of the Hispanic and Latino community, reflecting the importance and embracing diversity, and reaffirming our commitment to ensuring that all people, regardless of their backgrounds, have the opportunity to achieve their dreams in this great nation.
Yes, now, congratulations. I'm going to ask my legislative aide, Diana Orocho Gonzalez, to come down and be part of the picture. She did not know she's being called.
Well, Amelia, now you got to come down.
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you, and that was indeed wonderful. And I would also like to mention that my legislative aide, Monica Nieves, is a proud member of your community also. Okay, and next is the National Arts and Humanities, Mr. Bellucci, would you like to read this one?
If I could just invite everyone, well, I'd like to invite Dr. Romero, who was the Chair of the Virginia Beach Arts and Humanities Commission, to join us at the podium. Thank you, Dr. Romero. Whereas the month of October is recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress since nineteen thirty-three. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich people's lives through education, recreation, and creative work, and by inspiring the imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts are accessible to all, and the arts and humanities are an essential component of quality of life, sense of place, and mental health. And Virginia Beach's vibrant arts community provides a myriad of opportunities for creative expression for all, starting as children and continuing throughout the twilight years. And whereas the City of Virginia Beach established an Arts and Humanities Commission in nineteen seventy-nine, and the commission has remained steadfast in promoting excellence in arts and humanities by initiating and supporting programs, activities, and policies that inspire, nurture, and reflect the cultural diversity of the area. And whereas in two thousand twenty-four, the City of Virginia Beach, at the behest of citizens, established a landmark dedicated funding source directing twenty percent of amusement tax revenue to enhance the reach and distribution of arts throughout the city, connecting neighbors and communities, both today and into the future. And whereas countless residents and visitors experience the best of Virginia Beach, thanks to our local nonprofit arts and humanities organizations and the thousands of artists who share their talents with the community. Now therefore, Robert M. Dyer, mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, does hereby proclaim October two thousand twenty-four as Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Virginia Beach, and he calls upon all citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in Virginia Beach through participation and support of artists and our many arts and humanities organizations. And if I could just add to what was already stated, arts and creative expression help us understand each other, our history, and the human experience that we are sharing. And I'm so grateful to be joined, not only by Dr. Romero tonight, but by so many friends and colleagues and people I respect and admire who also understand and are wonderful ambassadors for arts organizations, artists, and creative expression. And I want to thank all of you for being here so much.
I'd love it if everybody came. Come on, the whole council is invited. Everybody smart, don't whine.
And on that end, just a little bit, there we go. Please make sure you can see me with both eyes. I don't want somebody hiding behind. So looking right up here, and I'll take about five thousand, make sure nobody's blinking. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
They didn't know what they were asking for.
Thank you for being here. Hi, thank you. How are you?
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and all City Council members. Again, I am Dr. Cynthia Romero, proud to be the Chair of the Virginia Beach Arts and Humanities Commission. And on behalf of all my fellow current and former commissioners, I want to say thank you to the Virginia Beach City Council for its ongoing support for the arts and culture in our community. A key milestone in realizing the vision of Arts Plan twenty thirty came, as you heard, in July twenty twenty-four, when you, the Virginia Beach City Council, took a monumental step of approving a dedicated revenue source to support arts and culture. By allocating twenty percent of admission taxes to arts funding, the council ensured a sustainable financial foundation for the city's artistic and cultural growth. This pivotal decision brings the aspirations of Art Plan twenty thirty into reality, marking a transformative moment in the history of the arts in Virginia Beach. The newly secured funding not only underscores the city's commitment to fostering creativity, but also ensures that future generations will continue to benefit from a thriving, dynamic art ecosystem. This funding builds on these foundational steps, further supporting local artists and community-based projects, and bringing the vision of a more vibrant, inclusive, and creative Virginia Beach to life. We have countless artists, art professionals, volunteers, organizations, patrons, and audiences who make our city a diverse and thriving community. Tonight, the faces in this room represent a fraction of the artistic and creative minds, bodies, and souls who are proud to make Virginia Beach their home. And as you saw, they stood previously. And yes, I am standing. I would encourage everyone to experience art and culture this month and every month by seeing a show, visiting a gallery, listening to a musical number, watching a dance presentation onstage, exploring a museum, composing some poetry, or creating visual art, whatever the moment moves you to do, to express your thoughts, to share your joy, and to invite others to do the same. Together, we can inspire each other and help integrate arts and humanities into the fabric of everyday life across Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we honor National Breast Center Cancer Awareness Month. Donna Remick, Lisa Stradler, please come up. Welcome. It's nice to see you again.
They're in the pink. It's a real joy to see y'all here tonight, and they've got Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, and it's going to be November second, November second, down on our boardwalk. And these are the co-chairs, and I'm honorary chair. It's my second year in a row, so I'm really excited about doing it, and I should have worn pink tonight, just like you ladies. But we're very pleased to share this proclamation with you today. Whereas breast ca-, excuse me. Whereas breast cancer is the most prevalent cancer diagnosed among women in the United States and stands as the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women, followed only by lung cancer, as reported by the American Cancer Society. Globally, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society helps people with breast cancer in our community, working tirelessly to find new drugs and treatments, as well as new ways to use existing treatments. Research programs had advanced prevention, screening, and treatment that saved lives. And whereas, according to Cancer Facts and Figures, an annual ACS publication, the female breast cancer death rate peaked in nineteen eighty-nine, then declined by forty-one percent in twenty eighteen. This progress reflects improvements in early detection and treatment, and translates to an estimated four hundred and three thousand, two hundred fewer breast cancer deaths than would have been expected if the death rate had remained at its peak. And whereas, we need to continue to fund research to help save even more lives in the future. Every year in the U.S., about two hundred and forty thousand women are diagnosed with breast cancer, and about forty-two thousand women will die from it. And whereas October twentieth is the National Mamogram, Mamography Day, we encourage everyone to encourage those they love to schedule their routine mammogram. And whereas women ages forty to forty-four should have the choice to start annual breast cancer screening with mammograms. And whereas women ages forty-five to fifty-four should get mammograms every year. And whereas women fifty-five and older should switch to mammograms every two years, or can continue yearly scanning. And whereas the City of Virginia Beach and the American Cancer Society advocate to end cancer as we know it for everyone. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-four Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In Virginia Beach, I call upon the citizens and health providers in Virginia Beach to increase awareness and follow the steps in advance for prevention. And witness thereof, I have herentoo set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this first day of October in two thousand and twenty-four, Robert M. Bobby Dyer. And I want to also say that I too am a breast cancer survivor, and everything here is so true, plus more.
I'll wait to get your seat.
Well deserved, and thank you for your efforts.
We will keep him up. On behalf of the American Cancer Society, survivors and caregivers, we want to thank you for this proclamation. This is Breast Cancer Awareness, Awareness, Awareness Month. That's what we're all about. We're about awareness. Know your risk factors. Anybody in your family had cancer? That's always something. Smoking, your diet, exercise. Get screened. Mamograms save lives. Know you're normal. Gee, that's a lump. I wonder if I should see my doctor. Wow, that's a pain I didn't have before. Maybe I should see my doctor. Along the same lines of awareness, awareness of statistics. Y'all have heard one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. Over three hundred thousand women and twenty-eight hundred men, twenty-eight hundred men, will be diagnosed by the end of this year. Unfortunately, forty-two thousand, actually way over forty-two thousand, will die of breast cancer by the end of December. There is a positive side. There is more than four million breast cancer survivors. Some are still in treatment, others are out of treatment, some are around for quite a few years, some are around for twenty-five years. There's many with my group that have been around for a long time. Recently, the American Cancer Society spearheaded a new innovative, unusual, reaching out to our community. Because of very strong statistics, Black women in the U.S. are approximately forty percent more likely to die of breast cancer. Forty percent, that's a large percentage. This initiation, I'm sorry, this initiative, it's called Voices of Black Women. We're training women in the Black community to be ambassadors, to go out and speak to the community, tell them about their risks, tell them about the mortality in their, in their community. We're hoping with their help and this program to move on, that we will save more lives, and these statistics will go down the toilet, as they say. Once again, awareness. You have proclaimed Breast Cancer Month, the month of October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'm hoping that each one of you reach out to anyone you know to help them, to send them to the American Cancer Society if they need help. There's so many resources there. It is research that brings hope to people facing this terrible disease. Research funded by events and by donations. Now I'm going to step aside and let my good friend here, Lisa Strader, who is my co-chair with me for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer.
Thank you, Donna. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Strader, and I am here on behalf of the American Cancer Society's Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. I am also one of the lead volunteers for this amazing walk. This year marks our second time holding the event at the beautiful Virginia Beach oceanfront, my home. We're excited to announce that our walk will start on Twenty-Fourth Street to First Street and back again. We're expecting over a thousand participants, all coming together to support a vital cause. Our goal for the ACS this year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to further our mission in the fight against breast cancer. Currently, we've raised sixty-seven thousand dollars, four thousand dollars of that being from my team. I invite all of you to join us on November second at eleven a.m. at the Twenty-Fourth Street stage. I invite all of you to join us on November 2nd at 11:00 a.m. at the 24th Street stage to make, together, we can make a significant impact and show our support for those affected by cancer. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you at the walk.
Thank you both, and thank the entire group for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, before we get to consent, read the script. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy, that allows for certain representative groups to speak for 10 minutes, applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have the cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that they've signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Your Honor, one. We have Mrs. Marsh, who would like to speak on J4. Mrs. Marsh, you are unmuted and may begin.
Good evening, Council members. I'm speaking about the ridiculous 20-year contract that is being proposed for the Sports Plex. That is an excessive amount of time, and it seems like council has quickly forgotten the $6 million loss that they had to pay out to the Sports Center ESM management just last November when they had to get out of that contract. We should not be getting into contracts that are long-term, especially 20 years. You should decline entering into this agreement. I don't believe anyone on council has done their due diligence. I don't believe anyone knows what the revenues are, and you should be finding out what's going on with the revenues. The audit that was last done showed many, many discrepancies in the revenues, and that the reported revenue did not meet the projected revenue. It was off by almost a quarter of a million dollars. Part of the findings of that report, which you should have gotten last week because I did ask that everyone on council be sent the last audit on the Sports Plex, that had recommendations which required that parks and reps should get monthly reports regarding the revenue generation from the facility on the 10th day of every month. So which ones of you have looked at that? And/or, there's supposed to be an annual report recap on March 1st of every year. Additionally, we have plowed multi-millions into the Sports Plex in the way of CIPs. And when I look at what was spent back in 2014, 2015, 2016, there was money spent on AstroTurf, and I reviewed the capital investments that were just suggested recently when you had a presentation, and now there's more AstroTurf replacement. So is anybody paying attention? Is anybody watching what's going on? Or are you just pushing this through because there's concern you may not be elected, and there may be new people on council, and we may get actually people who are concerned about the excessive spending that council has been doing and the money wasted on things like the aquarium where are we going to have a $3 to $4 million waste? The Sports Center, you know, buyout plus the $2 million loss? The money that was spent on modernization plans to Mr. Ballard for 15.4 million that we never got any benefit from? Now I'm hearing that we're $7 million over on the memorial cost for the BB-531? And who knows what's going on with Wave Park?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinance and resolutions, number one is a resolution to direct the city manager to provide additional medical screening for public safety personnel requested by city council. Number two is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property and fee simple and acquisition of temporary and permanent easements, either by agreement or condemnation, Ray the Robinson Road Improvements Project, CIP 10347.012. Number three is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of an agricultural land preservation ARP easement from David W. Hefner Jr., 152.96 plus or minus acres in the issuance by the city of its contracts obligations to the amount, excuse me, to the maximum principal amount of $1,171,582 in transfer funds to purchase U.S. Treasury strips. Number four, this will be with Mr. Taylor, voting no. The ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a management agreement with Hometown Sports Management LLC, Ray the operation and management of the Sports Plex and Field Hockey Complex. Number five is a resolution to formally re-adopt the Virginia Beach Emergency Operations Plan. Number six is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $3.5 million from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair slash Primary Extension Program to Capital Projects 10401, street renovation reconstruction, 11 feet, Ray Road paving projects. Number seven is the ordinance to appropriate $5,000 from fee revenue to the FY 2024-25 Commonwealth Attorney Budget, Ray Purchase Supplies, and support the operation of Drug Treatment Court. And that is it. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, noting council member Taylor's nay vote on item four, the consent agenda has been approved as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, open a public hearing on planning and a Etiquette RJ 22001 LLC for conditional change of zoning to AG1 Agricultural to conditional R10 Residential, Ray development of 10 single-family subdivisions west of Bluegrass Lane and east of 2024 Aloma Drive.
Eddie Burdon is representing the applicant.
Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of the city council for the record. My name's Eddie Burdon. I'm a Virginia Beach attorney, and it's my pleasure to come before the council this evening on behalf of Jacoje Tunde, a local architect and owner of this seven-and-a-half-acre parcel, abutting the terminus of Bluegrass Lane, which is a dedicated public right-of-way, but is unimproved from its intersection with Bluegrass Court to the subject property. This is at the northernmost point of the Princess Anne Meadows community. The application is a conditional proffered rezoning for a proposed small community of 10 modern, energy-efficient green homes, which I'm going to ask Tunde to come forward in just a second and describe his inspiration for this community. The community will be set aside from Princess Anne Meadows. There's a, the extension of the road will separate it, and there will be a small entry feature and community identification sign, and the community will be at the end of two cul-de-sacs. So it's not in the middle of the community at all, but the access was provided as a part of the Princess Anne Meadows subdivision to this property. The proposed conditional R10 rezoning from the existing AG2 will result in a density of 1.69 units per acre. The lots range in size from 12,100 square feet to 15,500 square feet, well in excess of 10,000, and the lot widths all exceed the 80-foot lot width in R10. The property is in SubArea 2, around ANES Oceana, and as such, it had to be reviewed by the Joint Review Committee, set up through the memorandum of understanding in Article 18 of our zoning ordinance. The development is of the same density or less dense than the neighboring communities, and it's certainly not an appropriate property for light industrial development, and therefore, it's consistent with the guidelines for SubArea 2. The schools in the area, serving this area, are under capacity, as is Feral Parkway, Princess Anne Road. I'm going to ask Tunde to come up and talk a little bit about his vision for this neighborhood, and then I'd like to come back up and finish up with a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Tunde, I'm an architect and a general contractor here in Virginia Beach. In 2019, we had a vision for a project, a green project, so we began to partner with other engineering firms and other architectural firms, from MSA to Pace to Barnes Design Group, began to work on this design. The vision for the Green Park project was for a housing project that was, that is going to be unique to the Hampton Road. We wanted Virginia Beach to be the first location to have this project because it's home to me and my family and a lot of the engineers and people that have been working on this project. The term green relates, as it relates to this project, is more of energy efficiency, environmental-friendly project, and smart project. Energy efficiency, we approach this from the angle of, we all, you know that more than 50% of our energy utilization in any home is utilized by heating and cooling. So we developed systems with the engineers of ways that we can heat and cool these homes at a very minimal amount of energy by utilizing very advanced technology, which is not currently in any homes right now. And also, for example, each bedroom in this home has its own thermostat, so that helps for comfort and for energy consumption. We plan to generate our energy on-site and utilize very minimal amount of energy to keep these homes running. In terms of an environmental-friendly project, the home, this property is located in a location where there's a lot of trees. We want to preserve as much trees as possible because it's part of the environmental-friendly project and sustainable project, as the city will allow us and the staff for stormwater management. We're also looking into ways to utilize stormwater back into the project so that we can conserve on-water utilization. The last is smart home. We all know that the smartphone is part of our lives now, and everybody cannot, most people cannot live without their smartphones. So these homes will be controlled by phones and voice-activated commands. And the world is advancing technology, and we believe that houses are still being built the same way. So we want to take housing to another level. That's the vision of the project. And the goal of this project is to create a project, an advanced home that's affordable. Because the super-ultra-rich, they've done this, they've tried to do something like this, but it's not come down to the average person to be able to afford. And that is the goal of this project. And we believe that the future of housing is here and now on projects like this, and it would be an honor to start this project here in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
So, so council, we had a pre-submittable meeting on this application two and a half years ago, and the application was filed over two years ago. The issue that's, the only issue that I think I'm safe in saying is the Southeastern Expressway, later the Southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt, have been in the city's transportation plan, master transportation plan, with the same alignment through this area of the city, this part of this particular property since at least 1989. And I've provided you all with a copy of the '89 plan, as well as the 1997 plan. It hasn't changed. The Southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt, council has indicated, is no longer going to be on the plan. We deferred this application at the Planning Commission from August of 2023 until June of this year, 10 months, for the sole purpose of hoping, because I know the planning staff was having communication with city leadership for a determination, because now there's your traffic engineering folks are saying we want a new road to go from Holland Road to Indian River Road and utilize this alignment, where this right-of-way has not been acquired through this property and some others. Nothing came of that, so we went forward to Planning Commission. Planning Commission heard this and recommended approval of the application. Staff's opposition noted solely because of the road alignment. Then, three months ago, we deferred the application again for the same purpose, to determine if you all wanted to acquire this alignment, we just need to, you know, to know that. My client is one of the nicest people I've ever represented. He's a very reasonable young man, and he has, every instance said, well, if you all want it, then we can change our plan, but we need, we need a direction. And so, we're here this evening, asking you to approve this rezoning. We think it's a, the area, everywhere in this country, we need housing. It's a, it's a unique, and I think a great opportunity, to create something unique and something that hopefully there'll be more of. But ultimately, we're not here to try to beat anybody up. We just simply need to know if we can go ahead and develop this property, because this new road is not something that council believes is, or the city leadership believes is essential, or that the road is essential, and then somebody, you know, the city's going to need to acquire it, we'll need to modify the application, we have another plan that we can develop, and all this work and all the money that's been spent on the engineering, the stormwater, it meets the requirements for stormwater, that's been through, that's an expensive proposition. So, you know, we're here hoping you'll approve this application, but not trying to get into an argument about it, it's just simply a question of whether, after over 35 years of being in transportation plan and encumbering this property, the city wants to acquire it or not. And that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor Dyer.
Yes, please.
I heard, thank you, sir, I heard the applicant mention one of the buzzwords, affordable. I don't think he meant the capital A, affordable, maybe just affordable for this district. Do you have a price point, Mr. Burdon, for the homes?
The price point we anticipate will be about 20% higher than the average price point of homes in Princess Anne Meadows, and that is, that averages somewhere around three-quarters of a million dollars. So what's affordable is, yeah, it certainly doesn't match the affordable from, and I think, I think Tunde said that affordable as these types of energy-efficient green houses are, which are, for the, barely, as all I've seen in GM's that are like it, and I've done some CBPA stuff with green roofs and all that, and they're very expensive.
I get it.
It's only in that context of this type of, because these houses are proffered at 3,000 square feet of living area, which is a good bit larger than those in Princess Anne Meadows. Sorry for the long answer, but those are like 2,100 for ranch and 2,400 for two-story, and these are 3,000 square foot before you talk about the two-car garages.
I just wanted, for the public, I understood him, I just didn't want people to think we were getting at 375,000, our homes.
I heard the same comment, and just, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
All right. And then additionally, I've had some conversations with our city attorney, our city manager, because we've, we've had so many inconsistencies between communications, I would say, Planning Department, Planning Commission. And so I asked some clarifying questions, because oftentimes, when applicants that have been working tirelessly for years to try to get a project forward, we will lean our vote on the Planning Department's opinion and/or the Planning Commission. And so I asked for clarity, because there are five new members, newer members, and I want to, for the record, put it in the record, I asked specifically the role of our Planning Department in terms of the recommendations and the weight that should have. And my response from City Attorney Mark Stiles was, council has historically wanted a recommendation from its professional staff. wanted a recommendation from its professional staff, but the Department of Planning shall assist the planning commission in its performance of its duties and shall perform other, such other tasks as may be assigned by the city council or by the city manager." And then he closes, "The preparation of the staff reports is of material assistance to the planning commission in the performance of that duty. That report contains a staff recommendation, but if council does not want such a recommendation, it could direct the manager not to provide one." So in this case, the staff has said they don't like the idea of this, but the planning commission, whose duty, responsibility is to give us the recommendation, has said they approve, and that's very important for the public. Additionally, we did hear from staff that, and Councilwoman Henley, when you speak, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there was no imminent action in terms of us purchasing this, but in contradiction, today we did receive a report on the ITA in sports tourism, and there was a little line in there, I don't know if anyone saw it, but it did state that this could be, this corridor, this easement was of concern. So I don't know which one to take at their word, but we were told we weren't interested, and then in the presentation today, we were told this piece right here is a critical component, and so I don't know if staff can clear that up, but I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you. If I could, I'll, my, my simple response is, we have been bending over backwards to get this determined, whether the city wants the right-of-way or not, and, you know, and that's the, that's the only frustrating part about it, when we've got a, a young man and, and his investors who have an excellent project and have worked with staff, and the only reason that staff is opposed to this is this right-of-way question. And it's just, it's a question that 100% needs to be answered, or he should be permitted to move forward with the rezoning today. And that's, that's my, you know, that's my position, that's our position. We're not trying to be, in fact, a lot of other clients would not have been close to this amount of patience, so just trying to, to get an answer so we can move forward in one direction or another.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Mr. Burdon, thank you very much for the presentation, also thank you to your client. I've got one or two quick ones for you, and then I've just got a couple for staff, too. The, the property in question that is subject to these reserved rights, you know, the road, or the intended road, is that an easement? Where did that originate from? Was that some sort of reservation at some point in, in the chain of title?
I'm sorry, are you speaking about the Southeastern?
Yeah, how did, how did that, how did that?
No, there's, there's no, there's no reservation, there's no anything. It's just, it's on the master transportation plan, or it was, for the Southeastern, most recent iteration, Southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt.
So, and I, I ask that question on purpose, because the only, we, we really don't have any rights in this property whatsoever, right? This is completely owned and feasible by your client.
Correct.
Unencumbered by any kind of city rights.
Correct, but.
And this is ju, there's just a master transportation plan that may or may not have shown up in the chain of title when your client purchased?
No, it's not, it isn't in the chain of title, but it is, you know, from a, from a land use perspective, it's, it's a tool that, you know, one would always go to if you're going to seek to change the, the zoning on the property to, so it, but it, no, it's not an encumbrance as, as such, but it is in the master transportation plan.
Is this something that your client was aware of when he purchased the property?
I can't, I can't answer that, whether he was or wasn't, I don't, because I don't recall, I should recall that.
And how long have you, I was reading the staff report and the planning commission minutes, and it, and it seemed to suggest that you had been dealing with this not just for two and a half years, but for four years. Is that, is that right? From start to finish, from?
No, I don't know about the four years. It's, the, the pre-submitting meeting was two and a half years ago, and my client handled that part and then came to see us after that.
Okay, and then during the process, when, when, when it was deferred from last year, you were really just waiting to see what the council may or may not do with, with, with the right-of-way?
In conversations that we had with the planning staff, they, Mr. Daewoo was the planner, and, you know, indicated that, and, and I was personally obviously aware of the, of the discussions and the conversations involving the Southeastern for a lot of, lot of reasons, so I, I was aware of the fact that that was going to be dropped from the master transportation plan in some form or fashion, or there was a lot of discussion of it. And so we discussed it, said, let's give the city an opportunity to decide, you know, if it's going to go out or in. As far as I can tell, it's out, but then we've got this new road idea that's come up, and that's, that's what we're dealing with, is, is, it just has a, a new life, and it's not, in my, in my view, it's not equitable to leave somebody hanging without a decision under these circumstances.
I appreciate you answering my questions. I just have one or two for either planning staff or public works. We would have to acquire a considerable amount of additional right-of-way in order to complete this contemplated potential road between Holland and Indian River, correct? We have some of the right-of-way already, or no?
We have a significant part of the right-of-way at, at this point. There is still right-of-way left to be, to be collected, yes, sir. That's, that's correct. One thing that I would like to clarify the record with respect to Mr. Burdon's comments, staff have not been equivocating on this position. We have been consistent, as this is in the long-range transportation plan, for two and a half years, we have stated that this is in the long-range transportation plan. It was originally expected to be the expressway, and then it was to be the greenway. The transportation corridor still has a role in the city's long-term transportation plan south of Holland Road. North of Holland Road, as council will recall, we gave a presentation some months ago saying that we no longer anticipated using that portion, but we have never equivocated on this part.
So we, we don't necessarily have a point in time where we may build a road, but we're just, we're, we're sitting on the plan until it's changed, if it ever is, to, to be able to do so at some point in the future?
Yes, sir, that's part of the long-range transportation plan.
Okay.
That is, that is in the city's current comp plan and is in our proposed submittal for the future comprehensive.
And I guess, here's my last one, and I'm just looking at a map, because I'm, I'm looking between Holland, and at least between Holland and Princess Anne. I would say less than a mile or a mile away, you've got Nemo Parkway to the east, and then you've got Dam Neck to the west, that basically provide those same kinds of connections, at least down to Princess Anne. And I know we're hopefully going to improve and straighten out Elbow Road to get down to Indian River, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just kind of trying to, trying to understand a little bit better why, why this piece that seems to bisect those, those two north-south existing, why, why that, why that piece in between is so essential.
I might have to defer that question to Dave Jarman, he knows a little bit more about the details of, of the, of why this section is still appropriate.
I think the simple answer, too, is, and I'm kind of playing a real lowman tonight, I think the simple answer is probably not today, but at some point in the future, that might be a need, and that's kind of why we, we've kind of stood by that and said that the segment there still is, there's still a need for that, pending development, depending what could happen down there as far as the road usage, so.
Thank you.
If I might respond briefly, the, the Southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt is a substantial right-of-way. The, and I'm not aware that the, that there's been a change, yet the road that I'm been, it's been described is a two-lane road that runs from Holland to Indian River, for which I don't know of any alignment from Princess Anne to Indian River. And there is a existing right-of-way for London Bridge Road Extended that departs Holland Road, goes over to Princess Anne Road, from the very same location on Holland Road. And that right-of-way, a significant portion of it, the city has, and that comes into Princess Anne at, directly across from the entrance to the TPC, Virginia Beach National Golf Course, and I believe could ultimately be used to get to Indian River Road if it's determined to be that, that that's necessary. But again, the, the point here is, there, there doesn't appear to be any plan to do a Southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt with a very wide right-of-way. And there's, I'm not aware of any plan for this road that is being spoken about, but the point really is, those, when the, the property's been in this state of limbo for 35 years, that, that plan for the Parkway and the, and the other, the expressway have been on there for 35 years. Will it be another 35 years before any road ever gets built between Holland Road and Indian River Road in this location? I don't know, but, and I don't, that's not, we're not the ones making that decision, but this, this council is, and I appreciate the planning, there's nothing wrong with planning, but at some point, you know, a decision's got to be made, and I think in this case, it's, it's really past time to make a decision. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Sorry, no, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my thing on. All right, Mrs. Henley, have a motion?
Well, I certainly appreciate the complexity of this and the, and I really regret the uncertainty, but unfortunately, at this point, the master street and highway plan is a part of the comprehensive plan that we have, and until we change that, which we may, we are in the process of redoing this plan, then, then that could very well happen and adjust some of this, but I really don't think that this particular forum that we're in is the right place for us to design our roads, and I know we've got a lot of connections here and a lot of connections there, and Elbow Road is under construction, set last, so that is under construction at this point. But this area is very important, and, and we don't want to take any action that precludes something that's, that's going to be very important, and I think as we're finishing up this comprehensive plan revision, this is certainly the right time to make adjustments, if that's in fact what we're going to do. And so since at this moment, this particular application would preclude what the comprehensive plan does say, that's what I think we have to rely on, is what it says at this point. And with the staff saying specifically that while the proposed development is of high quality and maintains a consistent density with adjacent residential developments, it does not align with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, specifically the master transportation plan, and with that being the fact, I'll just make the motion to deny.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's open the vote. The motion is to deny.
The vote is open. Oh, I need this to go back. By a vote of five to six, that motion to deny failed.
Okay.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Michael, do you have a question? Go ahead, go ahead and.
Ms. Barnes, I'd like to correct the record. I, I voted no, and I changed my, I went to change my vote just as the vote recorded, so I'd like my vote in the public to be reflected that I voted no.
So then it would be, actually, it would be four to seven, because the motion was to deny.
Okay.
So, Mr. Stiles?
So voting down the motion to deny is not the equivalent of the motion to grant, so is there another motion?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Yes.
An email came forth, this is for the applicant. You've, you've mentioned you just want some, some kind of resolution. Have you talked to Councilwoman Henley and our liaisons to open space? I mean, has there been any discussion on if the city had any interest in acquiring this, because ultimately, a yes, a no vote just has your client with this land that he can't do anything with, and if we are to accept Councilwoman Henley's position that this parcel could be used in the future, whether it's 20 or 30 years, based on our comp plan, which we follow sometimes and sometimes we do not, what is the opportunity for this council to take action, other than a yes vote tonight? Because I, you know, this continues to come up, this comp plan.
Well, the only, the only options that my client has are to, to yet again request a deferral, or to modify his plan of development to show the right-of-way, when there's no commitment on the part of the council to acquire that right-of-way. So those are the, those are the only options available, and this is at least, there's been some conversation, and there's some awareness, but, you know, it's not clear.
Thank you.
As to what the council's, you know, feeling about it is.
Okay, Barbara?
If I could ask Mr. Stiles, if the applicant is requesting the deferral, is that then an option we would have?
If the applicant requests a deferral, yes, unless it's a condition of your further deliberations. I mean, if you are prompting the request for the deferral, then you're in a gray area. So, I mean, I, I would recommend that you voted up or down, frankly.
That you would pardon?
I would recommend that you voted up or down, unless Mr., unless Mr. Burdon gives you a sound reason to defer it, independent of this road issue.
The, the other thing that I will say belatedly to Mr. Taylor's question, the opportunity to acquire it doesn't go away if it's approved either. It will take over a year, and that's the reality, to get in a position where you can get a subdivision construction plan approved. So that, that is also an option, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not advising you that's your best option, but that's an option that I didn't mention.
Okay, anybody else? Josh?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve.
One second. The vote to approve, the, the vote is open. Councilmember Taylor, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. Terry, can you close up? By a vote of nine to two, this application has been approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for, do we have appointments? No appointments tonight? Any old business? Any new business? Okay, we're going to adjourn into open mic.